Of the Lake Forest City Council, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Tack.
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Mealing?
Here.
Alderman Notes is absent. Alderman Preschlak, or Powers, I'm sorry.
Here.
Alderman Preschlak.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walther?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is comments by mayor. I only have one comment. I had the privilege of swearing in four new police officers last week. It was very interesting to see how young they all are. I felt very old. But the event was very well attended and really reflected our respect for our police department. Next item is the Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. First board is the Building Review Board. The members are Justin Stamer and Eric Lomular for appointment. The Gordon Board member is Bob Scales for appointment. The Croya Board member is Julie Crouch for appointment. The Historic Preservation Commission is Tina Dan Fenwick appointment. Library Board is Emily Van Bell appointment. Plan Commission is Lisa Naring appointment. Senior Resource Commission, Gene Manning appointment. Zoning Board of Appeals, Mike Adams appointment. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council, and everyone in the crowd tonight. Thank you very much. Before we get to the reason that everyone's here, I am going to take a quick opportunity to give a plug, given that we have the appropriate demographic for this. The city is soon to undertake a master planning process for Northcroft Park. And as part of that process, we want to make sure we have the opportunity to hear from the public, the community, and relevant stakeholders on what you might like to see as part of that, as part of a redesigned park. And so, on Wednesday, May 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00, whoops, did we just lose it? Well, from Wednesday, May 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00, we're inviting the community to come to Northcroft Park for planning and pizza in the park. It's intended to be very family-friendly, so please come have pizza. There will be a lot of opportunities to interact and to solicit your feedback in terms of what you'd like to see in the future of Northcroft Park. Up there it is. Next, I am pleased to invite the Executive Director of the Deerpath Art League to the podium to introduce tonight's emerging artists. And specifically, Morgan Adams, who's been the director for about a year now. She served as an honor graduate flight medic in the Air Force Reserves and began a fine arts career in 2014. Over the course of nearly 10 years, Morgan has exhibited in shows and galleries from Illinois and Wisconsin to California and Washington, D.C. Her awards include the National Rare Artist Award from the Everylife Foundation for Rare Diseases in 2016, and the Jerry Goldstein Foundation Artist Merit and Achievement Award in 2019. Her art, advocacy, and volunteer work has been featured in publications such as Bark Posts, Bodybuilding.com, Untold Stories, and The U Journal. And before I invite her up to the podium, I'll just say how much we really enjoy doing this every single year. Seeing the creativity and appreciation of the arts that the youth in our community demonstrate is always such a joy. And so, thank you guys for coming this evening. And with that, introduce Morgan to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all so much for being here. My name is Morgan Adams, and I am the Executive Director of the Deerpath Art League. The Art League was established in 1954, and the two events that we are best known for are Art Fair on the Square over Labor Day weekend and the Emerging Artists Exhibit during the entire month of April. This year, we are proud to announce an additional event taking place this June, the Sculpture Stroll, a family-friendly event highlighting local public artworks. Our mission as a nonprofit is to spark, nurture, and enhance creativity while raising awareness and appreciation of the arts within our community. We are so excited tonight to present the mayoral award winners for our 16th Annual Emerging Artists Exhibit. I want to first recognize all the participating storefronts, as nearly every store in Market Square volunteered their window space for the entire month of April to showcase each school. A special thank you to each one of these stores, Market Square, the City of Lake Forest, and for the teachers and faculty of our schools for partnering with us on such an important exhibit. Let's begin the awards. First up, from Kinder Haven, I have Kate Price.
How old is she? She came up here by herself?
Parker Stamer? Ryan Timpon? Mary Grimmer? From Lake Bluff Elementary School, Grace Raffin. Leora Simon? Hayden Steinbach? From Sheridan Elementary School, Ellis Cotton. Julia Shop? Leah Tabanesi? From Cherokee Elementary School, Stella Delfield. Eliana Heine? Olivia White? From Everett Elementary School, Austin Bien? Heidi Cantalupo? Grace Utig? From Lake Forest Country Day School, Mimi Doyle? Taylor Mercer? Liza Tambroick? From Deerpath Middle School, Evie McLaughlin? Josephine Foul? David Popoff? From Lake Bluff Middle School, Jimena Garcia de Hernandez Hernandez? And Kay Gottenbos? Benjamin Lawrence? From the School of St. Mary, Mary Hanser? Julia Melshimer? Lily Roth? Aria Sears? Eloise Hartman? Haley Helfrich? Catherine Pavakic? Sophia Gamel? From Woodlands Academy, Yu Pan? Crystal Tango An? From Eastlake Academy, Elizabeth Bowen? Marley Brown? Gabriella Romero? From Lake Forest Academy, Sophie Fay? Sunny Juan? Dariana Yu? Lake Forest High School, we have El Cracora? Oni Villanueva? And Eli Zerlin? Thank you so much to all of our wonderful artists for sharing your talents with us. Congratulations again.
Not you, Richard. You have to stay.
Did you see all those cameras? Did you see all the cameras out there? It was great. Unbelievable, yeah. When my younger daughter was a junior in high school, she took classes. And some of her, whatever they did back then, she had a series of photographs at that time, which I guess was a big deal. But I have them out. I didn't notice any. That's the worst of them. We've done this at the beginning of the day. So we all will have been more aware. I've always been good at it. Corrections. Never so good from the start. It's not a good thing. I think it's great, yes. Sure, yeah, whatever works. Yeah, yeah. Let's, I mean, there wasn't, I already told you to do it this month, there wasn't anything urgent going on. So let's see what's coming down the road. And again, the good thing is, the two, everything that I'm on, the liaison stuff and the committees, I'm meeting colleagues in the next.
Can you tag me? Can you tag me in your picture?
I feel like I'm flying way too far. Jed was better.
The only thing I've got on my skin is beating the robin.
Oh, good. What are you going to do?
So she said she wanted to get some lady friends. I'll meet her on the night.
Oh, good, alright. I have found her to be very, really wonderful. I've had a lot of questions that she's asked. She's constantly, you know, Jed got tired of her. I liked her.
I'll listen.
So, yeah, you have to. Good, that's great. Good.
Nope.
Except staff.
Only staff is going to be on.
No, it's exciting. It's exciting, though. That's a big deal for these kids.
But it is nice when you have a packed chamber, so none of them are angry.
It's so nice. And we were signed to a court. Everybody keeps happy. Judges would always call the private lawyers before the court hours. We have private lawyers that would do trials. And he would make us wait until the private lawyers were done. And he made us wait until the private lawyers were done.
Jim, I think you're wrong. I think five of them signed off.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Are there any citizens here? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. First report is Public Works Committee. Jim Lockaphier, Assistant Public Works Director, discussing Rockefeller-McCormick-Lowch Ravine Improvement Project Overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This presentation can really clear out a room, I guess. Not as exciting, but still very important infrastructure work to highlight. And I did prepare just three very short summary slides on the presentation for this evening. And the Rockefeller-McCormick-Lowch Ravine Project. We're seeking to address three ravine areas in the Villatercum subdivision. There's a map on the screen there. You could see the three areas highlighted. Just quickly going west to east, the first area, the Rockefeller area, is between actually McCormick and Rockefeller. And then, as you move east, that middle point, that's right off of McCormick. And then, finally, as you get to that point closest to the lake, that's the area adjacent to Lock Lane. And each and every case of these ravine areas, the city, we do have storm sewer infrastructure that the city owns and maintains, and it's in a state of disrepair. In many cases, it's failed, failing in others. But very important infrastructure because it takes storm water from the adjacent roadways through a storm sewer system where it ultimately is discharging into these three areas. Other important component of the project, there's some sustainability ads. And that specifically includes, in each of the three areas, there will be stone installed in the bed of the ravine, what we call rock riffle pools. Those pools are very important. They help slow down the energy of that storm water as it is discharged from our storm sewer and makes its way through the ravine. And then, secondly, any constructed impacted area will be restored utilizing a native seed mix and native ravine plant materials. For each of these three areas, the city does have, we do have easements for this infrastructure. But in any case, there's always significant advanced coordination with the neighbors, and more specifically, the private property owners that are adjacent to these ravine areas, that they truly live close by. Our last two major ravine project areas, we had very healthy engagement with those neighbors of the project area, and we're going to follow that same process. We really encourage them to meet with us in person. We bring the project plans, we go over the schedule, timing, what exactly they're doing. It's been a very good process. We, for this project, have a budget of $850,000. That $850,000 does include a $200,000 grant award from the Great Lakes Commission. We were fortunate to be awarded that. And then additionally, $50,000 from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. That $50,000 ad was added this past October to help those sustainability components that I just mentioned, help fund those. Went through a public bid process, as we always do. We received five bids for this project. A little bit unique this time, where we did have the low apparent bidder, Misfits Construction, who had not worked yet for the city. They have never completed a project for the city. And that's okay. But through that process, it's a standard process that we always follow. We ask for similar projects that are similar from the scope of work that's being done, similar natured work, but also scale. And we use budget as a clear indicator of that. And through the staff review process, made that recommendation to the Public Works Committee, and the Public Works Committee was in agreement with that, that for this size project, Misfits was not a responsible bidder. V3 Construction, moving on to that second one, is recommended and identified as a responsible bidder for this size project. They actually completed those past two ravine projects I mentioned, Ringwood and Rosemary, two very successful projects. Beyond that, they do a great deal of stabilization, ravine, bluff, stream work. If approved this evening, V3 would begin the project in September, would most likely be completed by the end of November. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight, again, considered for omnibus vote, and really highlight the grand total request with that to include contingency. We are under our $850,000 budget at $762,850. And then, just a picture on the left-hand side there, that's actually our last ravine project, that Ringwood Ravine Project that was very successful. And again, V3 did complete that project. So with that, happy to take any questions.
I have just one comment and question. Thank you, Jim. It's very thorough as usual. Just curious, given the scope of projects that we've had over the years and focusing in on some of those ravine projects, certainly not this evening, but would it be possible for you to share with the council the capital dollars that the city has expended on ravines over the last five, eight years or so?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to prepare that report. And I can say, I want to say since 2017, 2018, and Director Hallup can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been a distinct effort to fund these ravine projects. As you may be aware, Finance Committee, there's targets associated with many city infrastructure items. Bridges has its own target number. Storm Sewer has its own target number. And in, I want to say around that 2018 time, ravines, on an annual basis, we do budget $300,000 to support projects exactly like this. So I'd be happy to prepare that report.
Jim, can I ask you a question? What's the general health of this ravine beyond sort of the public works aspect?
I'd say, overall, this is probably one of the ravine systems that's in the best condition because the downstream end of this ravine, it's the McCormick Ravine System, open lands, that project that they're maintaining. And we've actually shared our project plans with them, even though we're much further upstream. They're excited about this because it does add to the overall condition and benefits the ravine system.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 13. So we will start with approval of the May 1st, 2023, First Session City Council Meeting Minutes. The second item is approval of the May 1st, 2023, Second Session City Council Meeting Minutes. The third item is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. The Gordon Board, Nick Bafeld. Building Review Board, Jim Diamond. Croya, Carolyn Bielski. Historic Preservation Commission, Janet Gibson. Library, Andrea Lemke. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Lisa Naring. Item number four, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the City of Lake Forest for McKinlock Post 264, American Legion. Number five, approval to extend the city's office supplies contract with Warehouse Direct through May 31st, 2024, with the option of, excuse me? through May 31st, 2024, with the option of, excuse me, the option for additional extension as determined by the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative of the Northwest Municipal Conference. Number six, award of a bid in the amount of $64,686 to tiles in styles for the Lake Forest Public Safety Building Flooring Project, plus a 5% contingency in the amount of $3,235 for a total of $67,921. Number seven, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award four city facility HVAC unit replacements to JNL Climate Control in the amount of $45,638. Number eight, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the bid for the Rockefeller-McCormick-Loach Ravine Improvement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, V3 Construction Group, in the amount of $693,500, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $69,350, for a total of $762,850. Number nine, award of the low bid for the annual concrete street curb and sidewalk project and the Deerpath Westmoreland Sidewalk Connectivity Project to Schroeder &amp; Schroeter Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in an amount not to exceed $185,000. Number 10, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number 11, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit for Pizza by Sal, a new restaurant proposed at 177 East Laurel Avenue. First reading, and if appropriate, final approval. Number 12, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And number 13, consideration of a request to authorize the city manager to enter into an amended professional services contract with Tank Industry Consultants for third-party reviews related to upgrades to telecommunications equipment on the city's water tower at 1381 Kennedy Road, in an amount not to exceed $26,139.24. Are there any items that council members would like to have removed or discussed separately? Hearing none. Can we have approval of the 13 omnibus items as present? Or a motion for approval, excuse me?
Seconded.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Mealing.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is old business. There is none this evening. Next item, new business. There is none this evening. The next item is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. Any comments? Excellent. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So move.
All in favor? Did I do this correctly?
Yes, sir. Can we have a specific of why we're going in, and we'll take that on a roll call?
Sure.
Pursuant to...
Well, this is to discuss pending litigation.
Perfect.
Good enough? Okay. So do we have to do the motion over again?
No, I missed who seconded.
Okay.
Alderman Preschlack. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excellent.
Motion carries.
We'll take a roll call on that, a roll call vote on that, and that will start with Alderman Mealing.
Yea.
Alderman Powers.
Yay.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we will now adjourn into executive session. The completion of which, we will not be returning and to the city council hall.
So take your stuff. Take all your stuff. But you can come back in here and get your stuff if you don't take it.